Women Voters Town Meeting Preview for the Monday, October 16, 2017. Special Town Meeting. I'm Bob Price of the League of Women Voters of Westford. And I'm joined by Jody Ross, Town Manager, Chris Kluschman, Director of Land Use Management, if I can get it all out.
Very good.
And Dan O'Donnell, Finance-
Director.
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 Regretfully, Andrew Erinersweet is not yet with us. She's tied up in traffic, but if she comes waltzing in, you will see her appear here. So we're here to discuss the 15 motions on the warrant for the upcoming special town meeting and to answer any questions that you might have. If I can start off, I have a question. It's about something which isn't even on the warrant. As I recall, at one time, there was an article having to do with the funding of a dog park, which disappeared from the warrant. What happened to the dog park?
Well, those of you who have been watching, we were looking at dog park locations for about 18 months, and the Community Preservation Committee actually provided funding to the Dog Park Task Force to apply for a Stanton grant. We had planned, which would help us construct the park. We had planned to take that to this town meeting, however, we weren't able to successfully agree on a parcel, so the Board of Selectmen chose to withdraw that article until we have a parcel, because we weren't sure that the town meeting would support creating a dog park without knowing where it was. So I am diligently working with town staff on finding new locations, and we hope to bring that to the Springtown meeting.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Diving right in. Article One. Approve unpaid bills from previous years.
This would be me.
It's gotta be you.
So four of these invoices are actually from DG Solar, which is one of our net metering companies. Net metering is, we're allowed to buy credits through solar power, and it offsets our electricity rate. So the billing is complicated, say at least, so this isn't all that surprising. However, with this particular contract here, we've had an issue with years with the billing company, where they went and increased the contract rate as they were supposed to in the contract. So what they did is they went out and they found new contractors to do their billing system, and this is the amount that was calculated that we owed going back to June of 2015. So it's not large amounts here. It's $6,100 in the general fund and another $900 from the Water Enterprise, but this is the amount that they calculated that we owed going back, and we did verify it is correct. And then we have one other invoice here from People GIS, and this invoice is for the Assessor's System, where you can look up your parcels and the mapping and all that. So they neglected to bill us last year and just found in September that, hey, we never got your money from last year when they were preparing this year's invoice. So we do owe that, and we did have the service all year, so yeah, it's not too bad. In total, we write about 12,000 expense checks per year and process about 20,000 to 25,000 invoices, so five isn't a bad figure to pay right now.
I noticed that in order for this motion to pass, we need nine tenths of a majority.
Yes.
Why nine tenths?
That's the rule at a special town meeting, so.
Massachusetts General Law does require nine tenths out of special, at an annual, I believe it's four fifths, so.
I neglected to mention that Susan Spohler, the new town moderator, is here, and this is something she may have to explain to town meeting.
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions on what we've just heard on Article One? How about Article Two? Dan, that looks like yours, too.
Actually, I'm gonna answer that, just to keep you guessing.
Oh.
How's that?
I'm sorry.
So Article Two is to approve fiscal year 2018, which we're in, budget adjustments. And so one is for zoning board of appeals expenses for $370. They are gonna hold two more meetings this year, and that is to pay their minute taker. The second is for building personal services. And right now, we have a full-time building commissioner and two part-time building assistant, assistant building commissioners. And the land use department has asked for a few years now to have one full-time assistant. We are expecting that our full-time commissioner will be retiring over the next couple of years, along with his right-hand person, Nancy, those of you who know Nancy Lima. So we feel it's important to get a full-time assistant in that office to help with that transition, and also to help service the public. So what this $21,143 is to supplement the '18 budget, so we can actually create one full-time assistant building inspector, and then we'll keep one of our part-timers on for 14 and a half hours a week to help with zoning enforcement and building permits and inspections and so on and so forth. So this is just to supplement that to get through the year. This third one is Veterans Personal Services, and those of you who know and love Terry Stater, our fantastic veteran service officer, he used to have an assistant in there to help him that was funded by a grant. He doesn't have that anymore. He's a one-man show. He helps a lot of veterans, and he has really been in dire need of a part-time administrative assistant in there. So we have offered him four hours a week, and this $2960 will fund that for the rest of the fiscal year. The last one is to actually reduce the school budget by $1,060,000. And those of you who were at the annual town meeting, you'll remember that we did vote an override to fund teacher salaries of $1.6 million, and then it went to the ballot where it was approved. And as we promised to town meeting, we were only going to raise a third each year, so that the impact to our taxes would be less. So the first year, the average home, I believe, is $61.
Yep.
And so next year, there would be another increase, and the following year, there would be another. So we're phasing that in, as we promised the voters. So this, because an override has to be spent first, this $1,060,000 will come off the school budget to offset that two-thirds that we're not taxing you in the first year. Does that make sense? I'm seeing a little confused look over there, but we did promise town meeting to phase this in roughly, it's about $540,000 a year, give or take. He knows the exact figure, but I'm a give or taker, and so this will make us just do that first third. And that's it.
Could you explain to me what personal services are?
Yes, personal services are salaries. And as you know, we're primarily salaries, because we're a service industry, but that is salaries, and expenses pays all the operating expenses.
Not massages.
No, it is not massages. [laughing].
I could then, how about that?
Any questions, comments? Article Three. Approved fiscal year 2018 budget transfers.
So this one is just internal transfers in our budget from the town clerk personal services to the Board of Selectmen expenses of $2,000. When Jody did her budget last year due to budgetary constraints, she cut out the $2,000 that we use for our strategic retreat. The Board of Selectmen directed her and asked her to please find the $2,000 to put it back into our budget, because the strategic retreat now is something that I think the town really looks forward to in June. It's an opportunity for all of the boards and all of the committees in town to both hear from residents, as well as to have a forum to show what they've been doing over the last year. So as a result of personnel changes in the town clerk's office, as everybody knows, Kari left, and Patty Doobie is now our town clerk, and the recent hiring of assistant town clerk, we had some extra money left over from that account, so we are using that $2,000 to fund our strategic retreat in June of 2018. So it's simply an internal transfer of funds, and it doesn't add or subtract anything from our budget.
Does it matter you're transferring money from one pocket to another, expense money into personal services money?
No, it, well, we can't do it without town meeting approval, so from that perspective, it does matter. But in terms of any not being able, we're able to do that as long as we have town meeting approval, and again, we're not changing the budget in any way at all. We're just moving some funds from one account to another account.
Article Four. Approved fiscal year capital appropriations.
All right, I'll take this one. All right, we actually have four capital items here today. The Capital Plan Committee did meet and review all these items, and they voted unanimously eight-zero to recommend all of them to town meeting. The first one up here is a fire prevention officer vehicle for the fire department. They currently have an '06 Explorer, and the transmission blew on it, so the chief got a quote, and it was about $6,700 to replace, to fix that car. An '06 didn't make much sense, something else is gonna go wrong soon, so they went out and they got quotes for a Ford Interceptor utility for this amount here. So we did recommend that they replace the car rather than try to fix it. Next up, we have emergency management. This is again a fire chief. This is for a radio repeater for $11,950. This goes on top of the water tank at Prospect Hill. Apparently, the one there right now is from 2001, and it's working at five watts, where it should be at 85. I'm not a radio expert, but that sounds pretty bad to me, so this is urgent that we fix this now, so. The next one up is the Westford Public Schools. They're seeking design and bid documents for the Westford Academy track and fence. They did get funding at the annual town meeting for about $350,000 from community preservation funds to replace the track, and now they're seeking this money so they can actually go out to bid and have a firm figure for the March annual town meeting. So the timing on this project is important. As soon as track is over in spring, they have to start construction on it, and it needs to be completed before the soccer and football season, so they're working within some constraints there. And lastly, we have the highway department, $22,000 for the replacement of a dump truck body. Our highway superintendent, Chip Barrett, actually drove the truck up to show us the rust on it to the Capitol meeting, and basically, he's recommending this to fix the body for $22,000 rather than replace the truck for $220,000. The frame is actually good, so he thinks we'll get the useful life out of it. And yeah, when Chip was driving it back home, it actually broke down on the way, so. So it turns out it was out of some sort of fluid, so it started right back up after, but it's a pretty funny way, called Jody during the meeting, so.
Send help.
It seems like we've had this Westford track on the warrant for several years now, in one shape or another. Do you recall how many years it's been spent trying to put that track in, with the right facilities?
I think the first actual request was the 350 at the March Annual. They've obviously spoken about the track a few times, but they haven't actually pursued the funding until last March, so.
Yeah. Article Five. Amend the Wage and Classification Plan.
Yes, so traditionally in town, when we have changed non-union personnel, we have taken it to town meeting. It's not a requirement of the charter, but historically, we have done that. So right now, we have actually two requests. I think there's a public nurse on an older draft warrant, but we've taken that off. They wanna-
It's on this one.
Okay, so I think the Health Department has asked to remove that and revisit that at a later date.
Right.
But the two that we're seeking at this town meeting would be the deputy police chief. Many of you would probably know that we do have a deputy police chief, who's Walter Shea. He is retiring in December. And I felt strongly that that position should be non-union, as it is a management position to work with the chief, and the selectmen agree, so we are currently bargaining with the union to get that position out. It is out in the fire department. The deputy fire chief is out of the union. So I took this to the Personnel Advisory Committee to try to establish a band on the non-union chart, and the Personnel Advisory Committee voted this week unanimously, two out of three, one was missing, to establish it at a band nine, and that is the minimum and maximum. We looked at surrounding communities, and the deputy chiefs in all those communities are non-union, and this fits into that pay grade. The second one is a Parks and Recreation Director, and many of you know that Pat Savage, our longtime rec director, is retiring on Friday the 13th. And a couple of years ago, I took this to town meeting and had it upgraded from a six to a seven, because she had increased responsibilities with cemetery and grounds, not just fields, but the town hall grounds and the senior center grounds and several other. So I'm removing that piece from that position. Cemetery is going to go through my office for the time being. We have a new facilities director position we're talking about at the annual, and we'd like to put grounds under that person if that happens. So this is, I'm hoping to be strictly a rec director, with probably sports fields still at this point. So I'd like to downgrade that back to a six, where it was, and the Personnel Advisory Committee did agree with this adjustment. It keeps it in line with our Market Basket communities, and so I'm asking town meeting to agree to make that a band six moving forward. We are advertising for the position, and we hope to hire someone fairly soon.
Under the deputy police chief, the current band is a WSO position?
That is a Westford Superior Officers. That is a union that is comprised of the lieutenants and the captains and the deputy chief. It's a seven-member unit in the police department.
Through the union designation.
That's correct, yep. We have two unions in the police department. One is the patrolmen and sergeants, and the other is the superiors. So I'm asking to remove that position from that union before I fill it.
Amend the revolving fund bylaw.
So I'll take this one. This is a request from the Recycling Commission. Essentially, what happened is they want to update their revenue source, and they're allowed expenses for their revolving fund. So previously, all they're allowed to take in for money was sale of bins, and they wanted to run some recycling programs and hand out some flyers and whatnot, so they need to expand on the allowed revenue and expenditure source here. So it's just a language change to their revolving fund, and the expenditure limit is staying the same at $20,000.
Can anyone explain what revolving in this sense means?
Sure. So this is what's called a 53 E and a half revolving fund. It's, last town meeting, we actually voted this as part of our bylaws. So a revolving fund, you're allowed to take in money through a specified source, and then you can spend that money, once you get it in, on whatever sources are allowed in it. So it's really just an authorization to take in money and spend it. It really has no impact on the budget, per se.
And it's called revolving because what comes in goes out?
Goes out, yes.
Any comments from the voters here assembled?
Well, I think it's important to point out that the revolving funds were established so that all these little departments in town could expend money and take in money and not have to go through the general funds.
That's correct.
That's why they were established in the first place, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And taking from the general fund would require town meeting vote?
That's correct.
That'd be very awkward.
It would be very awkward, yes. Any other? Article Seven. Reducing Taxes.
It's actually a reduced amount raised by taxes in fiscal year '18, and this is the article that we have.
Why not reduce some taxes?
I had to clarify. So this is the annual article that we have to balance the budget. We did present a balanced budget at the March annual town meeting. However, we're working with incomplete information. New growth really was the cause for applying some of these funds here. We forecasted, what, last September, last October, about $850,000 in new growth, which is new construction, new homes, new commercial, over FY '17, which would add to our tax base. However, that new growth came in at $408,000 and change. This is the lowest we've seen it since 2001, when I could find records going back. It's worse than the recession year in '09, where it was $531,000. So this is a bit unforeseen, so this is one way to actually balance our budget, is the assessors release some overlay surplus from their allowance and abatments account of $200,000, and then we're gonna plug that gap with $241,000 in free cash, just to balance the budget.
How much does that leave in free cash and what's the other place where we have-
Stabilization.
Yes, stabilization.
We have over $5 million in stabilization, and free cash, we should have about 3.4 million, if everything on town meeting passes.
Thank you.
You're good at explaining these things.
Thank you.
Now I know why the League wants to hire you to do a presentation.
November 8th, Finance 101. Everybody come back.
Looking forward to it. Thank you, Dan. Accept Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, etc., to increase the property tax exemption amount for qualified residents.
So this article is to actually increase the tax exemption for our blind elderly and disabled veterans. If folks remember, in March, at our annual town meeting, we increased the statutory exemption from $500 to $1,000 under one particular statute. There's now a second statute that allows us to increase that exemption again by another 100 percent. So we can now increase it from $1,000 to $2,000. So by accepting this, we will give our blind elderly and disabled veterans a $2,000 tax exemption.
Just for clarification, it's not for the blind elderly and disabled veterans. It's for the-
Blind elderly.
The elderly and-
Yeah.
Disabled.
And disabled.
You have to be a veteran.
You don't have to be a blind elder, disabled veteran, okay? You can be an elder, you can be blind, or you can be a disabled veteran.
One thing you might want to mention, Andrea, is the committee that we formed after town meeting last March.
Sure. Also, if folks remember, we formed a committee after town meeting to take a look at tax exemptions for our elderly, our low-income, and our disabled population here. And this is their first recommendation that we adopt this most recent exemption under the second statute. My understanding is that they have been meeting weekly, by week?
Weekly.
Weekly. Weekly, all summer long, working on some further and additional recommendations that we can expect to see at annual town meeting next March.
What do people have to do to qualify for these exemptions?
Is there, Dan, I'm gonna give that one to Dan.
Thank you. It's income and asset-based, so if you're married, the income limit is $41,001, and you have to have assets less than $75,483. Doesn't include your house, obviously. If you're single, it's $27,333 for the income limit and $54,897 for assets. So last year, 37 people in town qualified for this, so it was a cost of $37,000. If we double the exemption, it'd be about another $37,000, might be the impact.
And how many people were affected by this?
Thirty-seven last year. That was forty a year before, I believe, so.
Can that be 74,000?
Thirty-seven additional, yes, 74 total. Thank you.
Article 10.
Nine.
Nine.
Nine's a good one. You don't want to miss it.
Nine, a good one? Oh, yes. Accept Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 33, etc., effect of military service on salary, seniority, and leave allowances of public employees.
Okay, let me see if I can do this one. So Terry Stater, our veterans' agent, has proposed this, and in essence, what this is asking is when an employee of the town who is called to active service duty, that the town reimburse that employee or pay that employee the difference between the salary that he receives as a town employee and what he receives when he's on active duty, so that in essence, his salary stays the same, because we're filling in the gap, or the town would be filling in the gap. My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that right now, we just pay two weeks-
That's correct.
-for any employee who has to leave to go on active duty. And our veterans' agent has brought this forward, so that for as long as the employee is on active duty, we would supplement, or we would fill in the gap between the employee's town salary and what he's receiving or she's receiving when they're on active duty.
Perfect. Good job.
You've been practicing.
I have. Or studying.
Article 10.
All right.
Miss your eye.
We should do 10 and 11 and 12.
The floor is hers.
I'm gonna cover Articles 10, 11, and 12, which all relate to marijuana. These are put forward to town meeting for consideration as a response to the ballot question number four that was approved by Massachusetts voters last November, you may recall, that allows for the sale of recreational marijuana. It also allows for other businesses related to marijuana. So the term of art that we use here is called marijuana establishments. So 10 and 11 are articles that will be general bylaw and a zoning bylaw to prohibit marijuana establishments in town. And that marijuana establishments includes like a retail store, cultivation, a testing facility, or other licensed activities. So that might be like delivery services, other things that the CCC, the Cannabis Control Commission, might do. This is not a change to the medical marijuana district that we have in town, that we adopted at town meeting in 2014. So none of this affects the medical marijuana that we have. We are looking to prohibit both in a general bylaw and a zoning bylaw, because that's what town council is recommending. It's important, if we prohibit now, if we do get a medical marijuana dispensary, it could not convert to a retail establishment. And so that's one of the important things about doing this at this time. So town council has kind of supported, you know, 10 and 11 as belt and suspenders in putting this in a general bylaw and a zoning bylaw. I will say that this is kind of putting something on the floor of town meeting to have a policy discussion about it. There's not necessarily any mandate that says we have to prohibit, but we're putting it out for discussion. If Article 10 and 11 do not pass, the Planning Board is recommending Article 12, which is a moratorium. And a moratorium just kind of puts a halt to things for a short amount of time. So it says that during a short period of time, in this case to December 31, 2018, you could not allow, we would not allow a marijuana establishment in town, but that gives the town time basically to have a committee and study what we want to do if we are gonna do a bylaw that would allow and regulate a marijuana establishment. It gives us time to plan for that and talk about it and think about what's the right way to approach that. So I'm happy to answer questions. I'm sure there may be questions.
The state of Massachusetts voted for recreational marijuana, but the town of Westford voted no, correct?
That's correct, yes. Westford was a no vote, by about 52 percent against and about 48 percent for.
And so that means that we have special, some sort of special dispensation to-
Yes. This gets very complicated very quickly, so I'll try and take any questions. This summer, the legislature made some changes to the law that was approved by the ballot measure, and one of those changes that they made was that, well, let me go back. The ballot measure originally called for if you wanted to prohibit marijuana establishments in town, you had to have not only town meeting action, but also a ballot referendum in order to prohibit. What the legislature did this summer is they, if a town was a no vote in the ballot measure, they removed the requirement to go back out to another ballot referendum question in order to prohibit. That kind of makes common sense, but that, it was different from what was passed by the voters in November. The Planning Board recommends Articles 10 and 11 unanimously, and Article 10 technically as a general bylaw will be proposed by the selectmen.
Thank you.
Chris, can you talk about the reasonings? Some are obvious, but- Some are obvious, but the reasoning to vote for, uh, vote against it?
To vote, to prohibit?
Prohibit.
Which would be a yes vote for this. I should also add that the Board of Health did take a vote also on Monday this week, and they also recommend Articles 10 and 11 by a four-to-one vote. So I think that's one of the first places that I would start, is that I think there's, the question is for whether you're smoking or otherwise taking in marijuana, the health effects are a little bit unknown, and certainly the Board of Health feels very clearly that smoking anything is something that they, we want to discourage as a town and as a community. I think there are concerns that are raised by folks about potential exposure to children and just the fact that although the sale of marijuana is only for adults 21 and over, that just the extra exposure of having a retail store would just lead to things that, you know, which just makes it more acceptable in a way for youth.
I guess I would add, the police chief has also weighed in, and this will be heard on Tuesday, the 10th, at the selectmen's meeting where Chris will present, but the police chief has a lot of safety concerns that he has articulated in a memo to the board, and so I think that will be something they will listen to too, and I'm sure he will speak to the town meeting about his concerns.
Has the school department weighed in on it?
I don't believe they have. We certainly could ask them if they have an opinion.
Well, at the opioid meeting that was last week, it seemed that everyone on the panel, including the school superintendent, felt that it was a bad idea for young people to be using marijuana at all, and that it was a gateway drug, so it's probably not a bad idea to keep it out of our town. Passing these regulations would in no way prevent people from buying it elsewhere and using it recreationally in town, would it?
That's correct. The ballot measure allowed, made it legal for adults to take marijuana in whatever form you want to take. It has, cannot be in a public place, and you are, and again, this, these would only prohibit marijuana establishments, let's say, for example, commercial establishments. The ballot initiative does allow people to have plants in their home and to use marijuana in their homes. So that doesn't, this wouldn't change that, but it would just, you know, not allow any commercial activity.
I don't want to digress, but where are we on the, or the current state of the town on the medical marijuana facilities?
So last year, there were a couple proposals that were in front of the Board of Selectmen for medical dispensaries, and they did not move forward in the state process because the selectmen did not give them a letter of support or non-opposition, and I think primarily that was because of the ballot initiatives, if I can, I don't want to speak for the Board of Selectmen.
They pulled their applications, actually, so we never actually made a determination whether we would issue a letter in support or not because they ultimately withdrew their applications without prejudice.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. So those applications did not move forward, but for example, if another application were to come forward, that is something that the current Department of Public Health, which is the state Massachusetts Department of Public Health, is the licensing entity for that, and so that would, they would, they could move forward through that state process, and then there's a local process. So we do have a medical marijuana overlay district, we have rules and regulations governing the, governing those, and so that, that process could go forward. One of the things that the ballot question four did, though, is it tied medical dispensaries as kind of the experts in marijuana, in marijuana establishments or marijuana dispensing, and so that if medical, if we had had a medical dispensary, it could have converted to retail. If the, if we vote to prohibit, and I do see this as a benefit to the town, we would still, a medical marijuana dispensary could still be allowed, but it could not convert to retail, whereas if we had had one that existed, it could have, we could not prevent it from converting. So that is a benefit to, to this article, these two articles. I'll just say, one more slightly complicated thing is that the general bylaw requires a majority, and the zoning bylaw requires a two-thirds majority, so the quantum of vote is a little bit different.
Are you anticipating a large pro marijuana turnout at this meeting?
I have not had anyone from the town of Westford who's, during the planning board hearing process, expressed their explicit support. We had one person, we had two people testify in support of these, of the prohibits, that is against marijuana establishments.
Thank you.
Can you tell us what the status of our neighboring towns is, if anything has been decided?
Um, uh, let me see. I'm, I thi- Chelmsford has the exact same set of three bylaws pending at their special town meeting, which is also October 16th, so they're taking literally exactly the same approach, which is putting both prohibit and a moratorium on the ballot, on the, for town meeting on October 16th. I'm unsure, and I can do a little research about some of the other towns, but I think there have been over, over 100 towns have gone forward with moratoriums, and other towns, I think about 30 towns throughout the Commonwealth have done outright prohibition. But I'll, I'll look up those facts, so I have them on town meeting floor.
Okay.
I have one more question about that. Of those 30 odd towns, are they all towns in which the moratorium was defeated?
Well, some of the towns that I'm aware of actually went for prohibit before the legislature acted, so they, in their spring town meetings. The legislative action was in late July. Most towns did moratoriums, but, so I'm not 100 percent sure, but I'll, I'll get some more research, I'll do some more research on exactly who's done what.
We weren't, but, but also, they weren't, as, as towns, we weren't allowed to say that marijuana dispensaries could not come in. We had to allow them in, so that's what...
Medical, medical, right.
Medical marijuana, that's why we made the bylaw.
So folks may recall, and, and again, the, the medical marijuana was approved by voters in 2012, and I think we did, we had a moratorium, and I think the town meeting action was in 2014, the spring of 2014, and the Attorney General did rule that you could not prohibit medical dispensaries, so we did not. But it is, it's different. The ballot question four actually explicitly allowed towns to prohibit commercial establishments.
Thank you, Chris.
Sure.
I think we're up to Article 13.
So Article 13 is another zoning bylaw amendment. It is proposed to provide for regulations for large solar arrays or large solar facilities. The important facts here are to what is large, and the bylaw defines that as 20,000 square feet or more of surface area of solar panels. That's about a half an acre, if you can picture that. We currently have no regulations in the planning boards, in the zoning bylaw, that address solar in any way. We are not allowed to prohibit or refuse solar facilities to be allowed based on state law, and that's part of State Zoning Act, Chapter 40A. But this is, and so we, we think it is important, if someone came in and wanted to do a large solar array, let's say on a farm or a farm field, right now, we wouldn't have a notice to a butters, we wouldn't have any criteria or standards to provide for a buffering of those or, or anything. It would just have to be allowed outright. So we think this is important to add some standards. The process is a site plan review in front of the planning board, that's relatively quick process through the planning board. And just to be clear, these are, this is not to regulate rooftop solar that's on top of your house, or even a small ground mount that might serve a single house. This is really for large facilities. The planning board recommends this Article 5 to nothing.
Okay, thank you. Article 14.
Okay. So Article 14 is another, the last zoning bylaw amendment, and it is providing for more than a single use in our commercial highway and industrial highway zoning districts. And just for those that are here, and for the folks at WCAT, if you can get our, my zoning, I brought my zoning map, and this area here along Route 110, this teal and these dark maroon colors, the teal is the commercial highway or CH zoning district, and the maroon is the industrial highway. So just to kind of, this would be the Tech Park East where Juniper Networks is, this is all along 110, and then this is where Red Hat and NetScout are located, and it does go along Powers Road. So currently in our zoning bylaw, we have a provision that says that there's only a single use allowed for, on a, on a, on a lot. And so you might be thinking, well, I can think about Route 110, and there sure seems like there's different uses. Cornerstone Square has restaurants and hairdressers and office space and a supermarket. Those are all individual uses in our use table in the zoning bylaw, and use, the use table is really one of the primary ways that zoning is regulated in Westford and throughout the Commonwealth. So once this has been pointed out to us that only one use is allowed on a lot, we feel like it's important to change this, to allow for mixed uses in this commercial, in our commercial area, where a strict interpretation of the zoning bylaw would not allow that. We had a court order in one of our litigation, land use litigations, that actually pointed out this specific piece of our zoning bylaw. It had been a presumption that the major commercial project portion of the zoning bylaw allowed for mixed uses, which was what, for example, Cornerstone Square was permitted under, but in fact, it never says mixed, multiple uses, it says that there are multiple buildings that are allowed, but not multiple uses. So this is really to kind of cure that problem by allowing more than one use in these, in these districts, in our, you know, kind of commercial core. This is important from planning principles, in that it's important to allow uses to mix together because it's an efficient use of land. It also, we have property owners that own property in these areas that it's very unclear what they're allowed to do, and so we, in order to treat everybody the same, we have to require people to go for a variance to allow for multiple uses on a lot. That's not an efficient way of permitting our land use in an area which already has a mixed-use character to it. So again, the other examples of mixed use, Cornerstone Square, the Whole Foods Plaza, other places along Route 110, the New Delhi and Workers Credit Union, that's on the corner of Powers Road, or sorry, Concord Road, and Route 110 across from the Bach Honda, that had to get a use variance to allow for those two distinct uses to happen, which, you know, before this was pointed out to us, it wouldn't have had to do that.
Does mixed use also include the concept of having retail stores on the first floor and living quarters on the second floor?
It does, but in this case, we're, right now residential is not a permitted use in the CH and the IH, so this would allow mixtures of the uses that are already allowed in those districts. So for example, you know, a supermarket, or a restaurant, or a personal service, like a hairdresser or something like that. So this is not a change that would allow residential in those districts.
That, that's a terrible oversight. In this town where we need more, more housing, why don't we have, why don't we have bylaws that allow what Bob just said, apartments over commercial establishments?
I personally don't disagree with you, and in fact, in the last year, we held many, many meetings and put forward a concept of allowing multifamily in the CH and IH districts, but based on the 420 units that have now been approved by the zoning board of appeals along 110, in actually our CH and IH area right here.
Princeton.
The proposal by the Gutierrez Company and the proposal by Princeton Properties, which have been approved as comprehensive permits, I've been requested by the planning board and the zoning board of appeals to kind of hold off on multifamily until those projects get built out and we see the impact of all of that residential. But we, we, actually, the Affordable Housing Committee, the Master Plan Implementation Committee, the planning staff, and others held multiple forums and discussions about multifamily zoning along 110, but it's on hold for now.
How is multi, multi, multifamily different from mixed commercial in housing?
Well, when you allow for mixed uses, it doesn't mean you necessarily get mixed uses, so if you allowed for apartments over commercial, you might also just get apartments unless the bylaw was written to require mixed use, which is, can be tricky. But I, I take your point, and there has been actually a very active exploration of, of that. We're a little bit on hold right now to see how this big flush of multifamily housing plays out.
Thank you.
Chris, what would be the reasoning in getting back to the commercial discussion for not approving multi-use on the commercial end? What's the logic? What's the argument?
Uh, I, I'm not sure I can make an argument against something that I think makes sense. I, I think this is recognizing the character of Route 110 as it is right now. If, I guess if you were, wanted to continue to hold businesses to have to get a variance, if you had more than one use, if you felt like more process was better, I think from an economic development standpoint, and from just, just the character that's there right now, it, it makes sense. And really, again, until it was pointed out by a judge in a court case, there was a working presumption, I think by many people, even before my time, that the MCP allowed for, I'm sorry, Major Commercial Project process allowed for uses to be mixed together, and it was just then after that court order pointed out, we did a very close reading of the bylaw, and the judge was correct. And the planning board did recommend this Article 5 to nothing as well.
Thank you, Chris.
Sure.
And finally, Article 15, transfer custody of a parcel on Acton Road from the Tax Possession Sales Committee to Conservation Commission.
So last but not least, this is a small parcel of land, less than an acre, basically on the Westford-Chelmsford border on Acton Road, Route 27. It abuts conservation land in Chelmsford, and so by transferring this to the Conservation Commission, we're just enlarging that parcel of conservation land. And the Board of Selectmen were, supported this 5 to nothing, and the Finance Committee recommended it 7 to nothing, so.
Is this by any chance the parcel that was the, was the proposed parking lot for the rail, for the rail trail?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No.
It's way at the other end, on the Chelmsford.
Yeah, it's on the Chelmsford line, I mean, almost, it's like Hart Pond, do you know where that is? That's where it is.
Thank you.
Well, that completes the discussion. All that remains is for you, the voters, come to Special Town Meeting. It will be held Monday, October 16th, at the Abbott School Gym, begins at 7:30 PM. In the meantime, you can view the latest draft of the motions document, which is what we've been looking at, on the town website under Government, Town Meeting, Meeting Documents. And of course, hard copies of the motions document will be available at Special Town Meeting, as usual. Thanks to Andrea, Jody, Chris, and Dan for participating tonight.
Bob, one, one last statement you can make about registering by tomorrow, correct?
By tomorrow night, 8:00 PM, yes.
To vote by 8:00 PM tomorrow in order to vote in.
If you want to participate actively in Special Town Meeting, you have to register to vote, if you're not already, by tomorrow evening.
8:00 PM.
8:00 PM. There'll be a line, I know. This event was sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Westford as part of its voter education program. Thanks to everyone who participated here and also at home. Don't forget that quorum of 200 voters present is required to start a special town meeting, so please come to the special town meeting, be counted, and participate in the open town meeting form of government that we have. Thanks again.
And thanks to the League.
[applause][1791.37]